All right, wanna get it going?
Yes, sir. So for roll call, I'm, everybody's here. Do you need us to say our names or how would, how do you want me that?
Um, yeah, if you can, if everybody just goes one at a time and or everybody just kind of unmutes themselves and.
Okay, uh, Laurel and Bachman present.
Jordan Jones, president.
Jesse Roper, present.
John Evans, present.
Robert Sossman, present.
Aaron McConnell, present.
Teresa, if you're trying to say hello, you're on mute.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, Teresa Wakefield, present.
Awesome. So we've got the full board here. Welcome, everybody.
Yay. Um, so I do not see any, um, people I don't recognize. So we don't have any public tonight. Is that correct?
That should be correct. And um, I actually.
Yes, that is correct.
Coming to the Leaper Center and nobody is here, so.
Um, so then moving on to the consideration of, um, minutes. Um, are you guys okay with just we'll table the minutes from last month's meeting? We'll get, we'll, um, vote on those in the January meeting.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, cool. Okay, so we'll move on to our discussion and action items.
Did you turn that around to see people?
Pardon? Sorry, I thought I heard Eric.
Yeah.
That was not me. I'm not sure who that was.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, we'll table, table the minutes until next month.
Yep, and then we can approve those, um, and, uh, the ones for this. Um, at the same time.
Excellent.
So we had on here as our first, um, discussion item was new post appointee. Welcome, Aaron.
Thank you. Good to be here.
Um, do you wanna, do you wanna tell us a little bit about yourself, Aaron?
No, no, I'm just kidding. Uh, name's Aaron McConnell. I've been in, uh, Wellington for going on two years now. Um, I am the district sales manager for Wayne Dalton. I'm sitting in a hotel room in Riedoso, New Mexico right now. Which, uh, it's been interesting, but, um, I have a degree in community recreation and park administration, currently not using it, uh, because I'm selling garage doors and, uh, just happy to be here.
Excellent.
Well, welcome, Aaron. We're really glad you're here too. Um, we're excited to meet you next month and, um, like I said before, we're excited to have a full board. Um, we have a lot of things we wanna, we wanna work on. So this is, um, like I said, pretty cool to, to have everybody here. So thank you for volunteering.
No problem.
Um, it'd be nice to do introductions for us, but since you can't do our faces, we'll, we'll meet in person next month.
Yeah. Um, so Billy, for moving on, talking about WCP memorial funding, did you have? Anything you want to say, or do you want me to talk about that?
Well, um, yeah, why don't you go ahead first, Laurel Lynn, and then I'll follow up with kind of some thoughts that I had about us moving forward.
Okay, um, so just talking about the, the Veterans Plaza, the memorial area, I had sent some over some ideas about, um, you know, levels of, um, we can do for donations. I'm still working on that, guys. It's, it's not, um, ready yet. Um, but we've been working on that, worked on, reached out to, um, an architect, um, slash engineer and, um, they had some thoughts about the, um, the cannon being in, um, the design. And so, um, how do you wanna talk about that, Billy?
Well, I would just say that, um, this person that was, is interested in helping us with the engineered plans, um, is a veteran themselves and is just concerned about using the cannon as the centerpiece for a memorial. And coming from what we heard from him, his, his belief is that, um, people are coming to remember and be, um, be in a space basically where, um, they want to, you know, be remembered, feel remembered, remember the people that have passed and not necessarily, um, use the cannon as a centerpiece, as that was more of a reminder of more wartime and what actually happened. Um, and so his, his idea was that that, that's not, doesn't really have a place at a memorial site. Um, does it, does that kind of capture kind of what you got from that, Laurel Lynn?
Yeah, that's correct. Um, we just kind of got this information and so we're just kind of trying to decide what to do with it. Do we change the design? Um, what do we do with the cannon? Um, you know, my husband helped work on the design, um, is a veteran, still works or still is in the military, um, as well. Um, and just, like I said, we're just kind of, um, trying to understand that email that we got today and then how we want to proceed moving forward. So I think we're trying to reach out to, um, several people that are veterans to get their opinions. And then we'll have to kind of regroup and figure out, um, how we want to do the design moving forward.
Yeah, so a few thoughts we, we had and like Laurel Lynn said, this information, uh, I think she had just spoken to this gentleman the other day and he just got back as early as today, correct? So this is all just being presented. Um, one thing I thought about was potentially doing a survey, um, of veterans in our community. Um, those that we know throughout, um, all of our contacts as well as, you know, the, the partners that we were potentially gonna work with on this project. Um, I think a survey is a, is a decent way to, to go about that because, you know, we can make it pretty straightforward about the entire design. Um, it doesn't mean that anybody's gonna come in and change our plans, but they can definitely give us, um, a path and an idea moving forward. I think we would be remiss if we didn't reach out to them because really, um, I, I am not a veteran. And when that information was presented to me, I thought to myself, like, I wouldn't want to go through this long process and then potentially have sensitive things there. When really we're trying to do the opposite, we're gonna try to promote community and health and, you know, a strong belief behind the people that have served for our community and for our country. So I don't, I don't want that to be any part of it. And who am I, especially not being a veteran to, you know, to put that out there before asking them what they want to be involved. So a survey would give us an idea of, of their thoughts on what should be, um, the features there. Uh, not necessarily the details and the exact planning and any of the idea of who's gonna do fundraising and any of that kind of stuff. Uh, more just an idea from, from the community that it's for to, to see what they want and how they want to engage when they go there. Um, and then I spoke with Kelly Hodling today and she said a good way might be to, to do a community survey and just have it as a Google form. So if it's like, hey, are you a veteran? Yes or no? And if it's, if it's yes, then we ask them more questions. If it's no, then they can maybe just write in something that, you know, something that they like or an idea about it. But we wouldn't really get too much more input from them. Not that it doesn't matter, but I think our first outreach is really gonna be try to get to the veterans to see how that makes them feel and see if there is some sort of sensitivity behind that, which, which we need to definitely consider.
I totally agree with that, Billy. Um, so I'm, I'm totally on board with that. I, I would hesitate to take one, not to disregard anybody's remarks or who you spoke to at all today, but I would just, in not saying that I disagree or agree, just saying that I think the survey would be a great way to find out how other people feel and get more of a broad scope of what people, uh, would like to see, I guess.
Absolutely. Does anybody else have a thought on that? I don't know if we have any other veterans, if we have any veterans on our board.
Um, this is Jessie. I completely agree with this. I think this makes a lot of sense. I know there's a Legion meeting tonight. I think we can all, uh, connect with local community members that would be able to complete that. So I, I think this is a really good idea.
Okay, great. Um, I think in the meantime, so I'm hoping we can have an update at the next meeting. We'll, we'll, we'll gather some more information. Um, I'm hoping by the next meeting as well, we can have some more ideas on the funding. I'm hoping to just have a lot more information to present, um, to everybody. But in the meantime, please reach out. You have my email. You have my cell phone. Um, um, call Billy, call me, um, we can, you know, uh, be working on stuff behind the scenes so we can have more information ready to, uh, talk about next month.
Laurel Lynn, this is, oh, I'm sorry, Robert.
Yeah, no worries. I was, I was Google imaging war memorials and it seems like they run the gamut. I mean, I got tanks and guns and rocket launchers and there's a whole, I think it's the Vietnam War where it's basically a whole troop in rain gear, kind of statuettes marching through a marsh. I mean, it's, there's some pretty highly detailed stuff and then some, you know, more. So I think it runs the gamut as far as what a memorial should have and should not have. And, um, and we, you know, as it being the town of Wellington, we got the cannon here somehow, right? There's gotta be some kind of past history on why that cannon's sitting out at Centennial Park. So I'd be curious to know that reason first before and would, you know, like to know why, maybe, you know, I know I got, my family has, you know, heirlooms from my grandpa from World War Two that he brought home with him that, you know, are through there that, you know, so that's, um, just a little bit of my personal opinion, you know, just.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Um, and, and that's why we thought it was okay. Um, I've, we, we also have seen, um, several plazas and, and areas that have, that have had um, cannons and things in it. So we didn't feel like we were, you know, um, too off base, but, um, since it was brought up, yeah, we wanted to hear it. The cannon was donated probably, I don't, I want to say it's like six years now. Um, we weren't sure what to do with it at the time. Um, ended up in Centennial, but it would never was like a final, uh, place for it. It just, we kind of didn't know what else to do with it at the time. They poured a pad and, and put it over there, but it has been quite vandalized. We wanted to put it in a more respectful place. Um, so yeah, we'll have to ponder on that one.
Okay, yeah, it sounds, yeah, I mean.
Laurel Lynn, I was gonna offer to help you with the Google form or help kind of draft maybe some questions. I'm happy to help with that. This is Jessie.
Hey, Jessie, awesome. Yeah, I think Billy will probably be putting that together. Um, uh, I mean, we'll all be involved, but yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, and, um, if that's the, the, uh, I guess the direction or what we choose to do, I think it's a good idea. Um, we, we have the means within the town to put out a full town survey. Um, so we can probably do that. But if you want to help draft questions, um, that would be wonderful.
Yep, I'm happy to do that.
Thanks, Jessie.
My only comment is that definitely include families of veterans too, since it's a memorial purpose, you know, not all the people are alive. So that, that was my only input.
Oh, yeah, that's good. Does anybody have a comment on this particular, um, item?
Uh, just real quick, uh, I completely endorse the, uh, survey. I think that's a wonderful idea. And then, uh, thank you, Trustee Daly. I, I agree, the families of veterans should be involved. Um, because like you said, that's probably gonna be more of the people who are gonna be visiting there anyways. Um, but I completely understand where, um, this individual is coming from. Um, I just worry that, uh, did you get a feeling that if we went this direction that his involvement wouldn't be there or is, is this kind of just a, an item he brought up?
No, it was very cut and dry. If the cannon is present, he, um, does not want to be involved in the project, so.
Okay, I was, I was curious about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he had, he had mentioned as well that other people, um, and I don't, I don't want to say it's hearsay, but in his words, would also be concerned with that. So that kind of really sparked the whole, okay, maybe we need to step back and just, just, um, scan everything and, and get a good view of what, what we really want to do here, um, to promote it.
I talked to other veterans today and they said they weren't offended by it, like, um, and they had seen items in other parks and other plazas. Um, so I think it comes back to what Robert was saying. It's kind of all over the board. So, um, hopefully the, yeah, maybe the survey and talking to a lot of other people will help us make that.
I do have a few veterans to reach out to and, um, get their opinion on it. Um, people that have been in active military. Um, and then people who have just served, um, because that could be a varying difference also, uh, people that actually saw active duty. Um, and then, uh, just real quick, as far as funding goes, uh, when it comes to the point where we're actually talking about pieces, I have one person involved or, or one person that's interested already, um, in donating for some item, um, at the memorial. And then I've got a few more people to reach out to, um, that I think might be really inclined to, to be involved with this project.
Awesome.
Fantastic.
That's exciting, yeah.
Yeah, and last, last meeting, um, I'd started just a very easy sheet. I'll get that out to everybody. So if you do have people you want to contact, if you, if you feel like you're okay putting them on there, we have their information moving forward, um, just a spreadsheet. Especially if, you know, if it's, let's just say it's, you know, me contacting or anyone else. And then if Teresa's the one that's gonna be running a lot of the fundraising or, or heading up that piece of it, then she'll have all that information if she's reach out to people.
Okay. I, I did reach out to the American Legion through text message ma- only. So I think a, a meeting, uh, going down there and talking to them in person is probably the best way to go as far as getting, um, more involvement. I think it was easier to maybe, I don't know, we'll just, we'll just say it wasn't as, uh, it didn't strike maybe as important as I intended it to be through the text message. So, um, I think next month, um, I should go down or John and I can go down to the American Legion meeting and get them more involved as we, since like we're getting things rolling here pretty good.
Yeah, and I can definitely go with you to that meeting. Um, you have my number. You could just, uh, let me know when the meeting is and I can definitely be there.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I'll get, I'll get, uh, I'll get it all from those guys and then we'll, we'll go down there and chit chat with them, you know, so, yeah, sorry the text messages didn't quite work. As, as well as I do, they, they didn't blow me off, but they didn't help me out all that much either. So there was a, you know, we'll blame it on the holidays.
I, I think the hope was that once the design was finished and we can actually go around and show the design that that's gonna drive the excitement, right? Get people, people wanting to be involved. Um, I think we're gonna end up with a bunch of different veterans groups that are gonna want to participate. Um, unfortunately, we ran into this and, and so, um, yeah, hopefully we can kind of get, get a gauge on everybody's.
Agreed, agreed.
Hey, Robert, this is Teresa. Uh, I was just gonna offer also to go to that meeting with you. Um, just being the person who's gonna head the fundraising and everything, I would love to kind of have firsthand information on it and kind of be involved in that. Would you mind at all if I went or?
Oh, no, not at all, not at all. I just, just, just John, you know, brought it up that he would like to go. So that's, that's the only, the only reason I just picked him out of the group. So, yeah, no, not at all.
I think it'd be great if all of us, you know, if, if you guys both went, um, but if you don't mind, I would love to go.
Yeah, no, no, uh, yeah, no, definitely. I just, you know, I ask him if we can just get, you know, ten, fifteen minutes of their time before they get their chin dig going and then, you know, that'd be it. So they're, they're, they're pretty lax over there for the, the times I have stopped by. So just kind of, you know, talk a little bit and then, you know, move on and they can get to their, to their meeting.
That'd be awesome. Okay, thank you.
Okay, sure thing.
So, is, um, is that meeting though the sa- the same night as ours?
It is, yes, it is. Typically, typically. So, well.
If we have a, a couple of people going there, I'm just thinking, you know, not, not like it's a huge deal if we're, if we're pushing off the minutes, we can push them off another month. You know, if, if we don't have quorum, you know, to talk about anything we need to vote on, but that's, that's all fine. I think this is more important. Uh, we can always action item, meeting, uh, meeting minutes in later.
Okay.
Could we maybe start the meeting like thirty minutes, forty-five minutes later than normal?
That would be acceptable. Is everybody okay starting at? Um, does, does their meeting start at six o'clock as well?
I believe so. They do, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's the exact same, yeah, week and day.
Um.
And they're down at Sparge now, right? Is that where they're at?
Yeah.
Is that where they're hanging out? Okay, yeah. So I mean, we can get there at six and probably just get right through it and be, you know, up to the Leaper Center by six thirty at the latest for, you know, we, we can keep it pretty, pretty short, sweet, short and sweet.
Okay, I'm okay with starting a half hour later next week.
Okay. Or next month.
Next month, yeah.
Next month, yeah, not, not next week, everybody. What happened in that one?
Okay, so six thirty, perfect.
Okay.
Um, if we're okay, I think, um, we should move on to the next item unless somebody else really has something else they want to say. Okay, perfect. Um, Billy, you guys were gonna talk about perks and rec budget and where we're at?
Yeah, so last, uh, night at the Board of Trustees regular meeting, um, the twenty twenty-four budget was approved as presented. Um, so that information should be able to be found on our website in, in total, um, as it is. Um, nothing changed too much from the last proposal, I will say. Um, our ask of the eighty thousand dollars for minor park improvements was reduced, um, to sixty-five thousand dollars, but approved at that. Um, the board had asked every single one of the, um, departments, actually the town as a whole, um, to go back a couple of different times throughout the process and try to take out, um, I don't think that copied as well as I thought it was going to. That's not the whole page that I needed and I apologize for that. Um, the, take out some, some stuff to get our budget more in line. Um, and so each one of the departments had to take things out. Um, and since that was a large change in ask from year to year, that was, um, one that we decided to, to take out. Um, but they are, the board did approve of us getting, um, a large increase in that budget line. And then everything else, um, that I had set forth, uh, pretty much went through. Uh, we will be getting a new position in the Parks and Recreation Department as an operations supervisor. Um, per, per the budget, we won't be hiring that position until, um, June at the earliest. We, we can possibly start recruiting, um, for that kind of a position maybe at the end of April into May and then hiring them on hopefully in June. Uh, but that will help both, um, support this, the operations on our Parks and Recreation side and be able to kind of bring some things together with a, with the ability to help in supervisory responsibility as well as with, um, scheduling and maintaining seasonal staff, which is a huge, huge thing, especially during the summer when we have anywhere from thirteen to, I mean, if we could be fully staffed, if we could find enough seasonal staff, we could have up to fifteen to sixteen, maybe seventeen. And it could be necessary depending on if we continue to increase our recreation programming like we're trying to do. So, um, that amount of seasonal staff in, you know, all over this, the town at one point is really hard for, for us to, to kind of maintain with multiple people. So that position will help out greatly being the point person and supervisory responsibility over that as well as helping me supervise, um, the other people in our department. Cause right now I have six full-time staff as well as this will be my seventh, uh, when this position comes on. So it'll be nice to be able to have someone in the field a little bit more often that will have supervisory responsibility. So that was a huge, um, a huge, I wouldn't say win, but, um, fantastic for our department and for us moving forward with our projects, because that'll be someone uh, as well that can oversee a lot of these projects that we're trying to get done to help out if I'm not available. Um, yeah, it, I, I mean, maybe Trustee Daly would say something about the budget stuff, but it, it all passed and, um, you know, if you have specific questions, feel free to ask them. Uh, uh, I feel like overall it was, it was really good. Um, so real quick, some of the things that were in there is the, um, ADA fishing dock. That, that's part of the capital improvement project. Um, so that one was budgeted at fifty thousand dollars. So we should be able to go ahead and move forward with that. Um, as well as a new mower for our parks department, which is badly needed. Um, and then, uh, another CIP approved plant, uh, project or new lights over at Park Meadows because there, there's not very good lighting for the evening. So we're gonna, uh, we've got a budget to do solar lights over there, which is gonna improve safety for that community, um, especially people. Uh, this time of year, it's really bad when kids are getting dropped off in that neighborhood and need to walk around there. It's really dark. Um, as they're getting dropped off from school, if they're coming from the middle school, high school, so that'll be, um, fantastic.
And just to hop in, um, Trustee Daly is no longer on the meeting. She had to go, so.
Well, thank you. I know that you and Eric and Trustee Daly have worked really hard to convey, um, what the department needs, what, what Parks and Recreation needs. And, um, anyway, we just, we really appreciate you. This is, this is awesome news.
Yeah, and thank you guys, um, every single one of you. I think your support and your passion really, um, rubs off on the board in a really positive way. And they see how much you guys care about the community and how much us working together to better the community and really listening to what they have to say and taking that not, not just into account, but honestly into heart and really trying to help the people that really want to recreate and be, um, positive influences this community. So I, I mean, a lot of this is on you guys doing the presentation, going to the board meeting. Um, you know, I know you're not all at, at the, um, the interviews that had taken place for Mr. McConnell and Ms. Roper. But, you know, those are opportunities that Laurel Lynn and I talked about and took because we are able to be in those, um, interviews and we take the, that seriously. Not just, you know, finding new people, but also, you know, being honest and letting everybody at the table know what we're really trying to accomplish and hoping we can bring people in that want to accomplish the same stuff. So they see, they see all of that. And as we go through the process, you know, us getting a, this amount of money increase in our budget, the better we work together to, to spend it in a positive way and get it approved, but also, you know, use it for the people that are asking for it and, and deserve it for what they're trying to do in this town. The more we're gonna be able to get these projects put on capital improvement plans moving forward. And I think as long as we continue in a positive way, there's, you know, I'd say there's no stopping us, but it's kind of, you know, that's kind of what it is. We'll, we'll have some more spaces for parks as we develop land and we're just gonna have to do, um, all the work to, to make sure that we're putting the amenities in the places we need them to be.
Um, I, for one, I think the, the fishing dock capital improvement thing is awesome. That is probably the biggest, you know, home run we could ask for. That's incredible. That's really, really cool. And, um, sorry, no, um, so I guess hypothetically, um, is there like a, uh, can we, I don't know, like restart the wish list again? Like start that and like, these are kind of like, you know, I, I'm in, I'm in like the, the world of planting seeds and kind of seeing who's gonna, you know, I'll bring up the disc golf guys as first, you know, like planting the seed over there and see where they can start. Making their momentum, you know, and kind of, you know, then help. People get a little bit of. Growth and running, so like revisiting the wishlist on how we could. You know, get some of these things, get some traction under them. You know, for different avenues and different stuff, so. Things to think about.
Absolutely, and I think that's a fantastic point, Robert. So I think the next few meetings could be very exciting about, you know. Where where we're gonna try to move this money to, and we all get to agree and, well, you guys get to vote on. What you think we should try to do with these projects, and then it's my job to. Figure out how much they're gonna cost and get the contractors in or whatever, you know. Let's just say it is, I know we're doing the fishing dock, but the the fishing dock, if we wanted to move forward with something like that, that's. You know, not a ton of labor, but really just purchasing something and having the, having it built and. I just gotta get pricing on that. You guys get to vote on where where we should move, and then I need to take it to the board. Um, and once they have their. Once we have their approval, we move forward on these projects.
It's cool. I like it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'd have to agree with Robert. Sorry, go ahead.
No, uh, I was just gonna say, guys, for for the newer members, we had a member um, that was part of this board that. Um, had brought this up, that had brought up the the ADA dock, um. And and he was in a wheelchair, and this was his idea, and so um, this just really means a lot. Um, to get this project going and so excited to reach out that that this is going to happen.
It is, and let me just add with this project specifically, um, the budget is fifty thousand, and I put that in as a capital. Expenditure, because I didn't want this to sit any longer. Um, I wanted to get it done, and it was approved. But there, I think I've mentioned this a couple of times, but there's really. Positive feedback from the information that I presented to to this board, I presented to the to the state, um, the Department of. Wildlife and their Fishing is Fun Grant, and there's been really good feedback, and that that grant is. It's only a twenty-five percent match, so. So there's a chance that getting that fishing dock in will only be like fifteen to twenty grand instead of the fifty to fifty-five proposed, so. Um, there'll just be another huge win for us, and and I I can't speak to rolling over capital money, because usually it's just for projects, but. Regardless of if we get that grant, we do have the money in the budget to move forward with the project.
Nice.
Yeah, very cool. I, yeah, I mean, it always coming. Under would be. Even better for, I think, everybody's overall. Mindset and how we. Respect and try to work with the funding that we have. I mean, it would just, you know, we we try our hardest. I I I try our hardest, and. I think, you know, everybody else does too, so that'd be. Way cool, way, way, way cool.
And I love grants.
Yeah, I'd have to agree with Robert there on the uh. How exciting it is for the ADA dock. Uh, I know it's something we've been talking about for a while, and. And to see this thing about ready to go off is is. Just amazing, and then I also wanted to mention about um. The position, um, the operations supervisor, that's. That sounds really, really important, um. It seems like it's gonna help um, streamline some things. Um. And and I think the more that we can. Like Robert said, come under budget in certain projects, um, those are the kind of things we could bring to presentations to the board. Is, you know, you guys gave us fifty thousand, we didn't spend anywhere near that. Um, so next time we propose stuff, you know, we're getting. Approvals, knowing that we're doing our best, like you said, to be. Trustworthy with the money that we're being allocated and um, trying to do our best for the town and financially and for the citizens to do these projects, because. Ultimately, it's the people who go to these parks. And who enjoy the things that we're able to provide for them. So I I think this is really exciting news. I really, I think you guys did a great job with this budget, and. I did get a chance to look it over pretty quickly. I'm gonna go into detail a little bit more, so I can. See a few line item things, but I think you guys have done real well, and um, it's it's gonna be exciting here.
Yeah, and. And I appreciate that, John. It's it's work by a lot of people, and. Let me just tell you, like. You know, one year into the job, it's interesting doing a budget, just because you're still kind of getting used to everything and how you wanna use it, but. Having help and support from other town staff and from Eric, um, he helped a ton with the recreation side of the budget, because that's his forte. Um, you know, eventually I I have to put it together and present it, but um, you know, everybody was, it was a huge team town effort to get this pushed through and. Um, it was ver- very large relief on a lot of people last night, but in a good, positive way, like that, you know, you feel justified with all the work that you put in when. When you get to move forward with the things that you care about.
Absolutely.
So, and I would suggest, um, you know, if you want to find the the full budget, you can go on. It's it's much easier to find. The Board of Trustees packet was huge. I did not want to just dump it all into our packet, and I think some of it got cut off that I tried to put in ours, but. I sent the, I sent the um, link to the Board of Trustees packet, but you can also find it just on our website, um, the Town of Wellington, if you just. Go in the search bar and search budget. The twenty twenty-four budget will come up. And you can see everything.
Perfect, thank you. Um, if we don't have any other comments on this particular item, are we ready to move on to the next item? Um, indoor, outdoor screens?
Okay, so this is kind of something that has um. Come about very quickly, um. And without getting too far into it, let me just say, the idea of. Um, the Parks and Rec Department purchasing a a large outdoor or indoor-outdoor screen um, is multifaceted. Um. The original idea kind of came with helping to promote some of our potential adaptive recreation opportunities. Um, us being able to present uh, um, sensory and visual stuff as well as. Movies, um, and then being able to. Use that indoors for programming during the winter to expand our programming and. Um, that just, it just kind of expanded, um, after we did our Budget Boonanza. Um, uh, in the middle of October, closer to the end of October, it uh, a lot of people came in to the Parks and Rec. Um, budget booth that I spoke with, and they they specifically handwrote um. What they wanted to see, um. And a lot of people, uh, I I think I probably had maybe twenty total, twenty-five people come through, um. Eight people specifically handwrote in um, that they wanted to see more outdoor events that involves movies. And movies or live music. And so that just kind of further hammered in like that our community wants to gather together, and I think it it's a good way to reach all age ranges, and then we can partner with Main Street. Markets, set up our booth there, maybe even a pro's booth, show a movie, bring more people in to the markets, um. If we get to a point where we're ever doing live music, we can use the screen to simulcast across the park or allow people that. Maybe um, are auditory sensitive to be able to see it on a screen further away, so that they don't have to be close to the music. I mean, there's just so many cool options. We talked about doing. Outdoor game nights um, for family nights, so so um. That's kind of the the pitch that we're, I guess I won't say giving, but this is the reason that we wanna move forward with something like this. And um, I've I've talked to internal staff, and both Kelly Hodling and Patty Garcia were said, yes, present this to Prost. If there's a way we can figure out to still fit it into the twenty twenty-three budget, which we might be able to. They're all for it, because it supports multiple town departments as well as um. You know, one of our huge goals, which is presenting more adaptive or starting our adaptive recreation program. So um, in your packet or in the packet, you'll find, um, Eric, if you can pull that up, I think it's on page. I don't even know, page nine. If you guys all, if you all can take it. An attempt at just maybe looking at some of this stuff, we don't have to do it now, um, but this is just kind of what we would want to. Get, it's just a, you know, anywhere from a sixteen or twenty foot to a twenty-four foot screen, um, that. Basically has all of the audio visual, um. Stuff to be able to project movies or. Like I said, we wanna do like outdoor Scrabble night where families come and you just do Scrabble or bingo on a big board. Um, fun stuff like that, as well as especially movies for adaptive opportunities. Um, and I. I think I can potentially fit it into the budget this year if I have the backing, and it's gonna have to probably go to the board. Um, but I do, I do wanna present it to you all first, just to see what your thoughts were behind this.
Uh, I wanna real quick chime in too, um, I called both. Right now, I was looking at like two main suppliers, um, when I did some of this research as well. I called both of them, and it sounds like. Obviously, these prices are here, but they're generalized price, because the packages are a little bit more customizable than they look online, and so like, things can be. Uh, kind of changed or swapped out or switched in, you know, if we want, you know, more audio, we can get more audio. If we want a bigger screen, we could men, like, like getting a bigger screen, if we want a better projector, all those types of things, so just kind of. Keep that in mind, the prices aren't set, they're just kind of ideas uh, of like what something like that would cost.
And and just so everybody knows, this um. The reason that we would potentially have money left in the budget for a project that seemingly is this large. Is because we have a good amount left in a recreation budget that is um. It's basically set. For a potential increase in programming. Um, it's called recreation programming and supplies, but a lot of that would go if we did start multiple new programs, getting all the new equipment for that. Um, so a lot of the times, this budget ida, our budget line, um, doesn't even come close to getting hit every year. But it's projected pretty large, because if we would need to expand our gym space. Or or our gym use, or um, you know, start a whole new program such as adaptive, like this use. We have some some budget there. Um, we also purchase certain things out of there, like. You know, all the tents that we need for our employees out there and the tables, when those go old, we we flip those over. Not a huge amount of money comes out for that stuff. We do use it for certain things every year, but. It's really as a potential, basically, you can consider this as like. Um, a recreational growth line item that we don't always use, but I thought this would be a great way for us to be able to use some of that and then get the um. Potential approval from the board to dip into a different line item to finish out what we would need to um, purchase it.
Yeah, I wasn't so sure when I read about this, um, I was thought, oh, and I don't know, that's a lot of money, um, but then it was really hitting me that, um. You know. We've been talking about trying to focus on, uh, I think the word is, what what, intergenerational? And how we can focus on bringing families. We have lots of families that have. Lots of different generations living in their house, and and this is pretty cool. This is something for all ages that we can, we can um, bring everybody together, so um. Uh, after I was thinking about it more, I'm like, this is pretty cool, so there's my two cents. I'm curious what everybody else thinks.
Um, yeah, I I would say I got sticker shock. That would be the first one. I was like, damn. It's like, that's a lot of AMC trips, um, but, you know, I I I. I'd like the idea. I think that definitely Aurora does a, they've been doing a consistent movie night at their parks for years now. And there's obviously, you know, movies on the rocks, at Red Rocks that they do, that's very consistent. Um, so the the opportunity is really good. I guess the question I was thinking, because I thought of this, you know, from the the skate park, of course. Um, was doing something like this for two, um. A movie night there for the kids to hang out and kind of just the, you know, an evening thing, so would this be something that could be rented out or we could set up? Um. Something like that, like a rentable option, or we, the town would offer it to, you know, different groups if they wanted to do. Something similar, you know, more. You know, I guess the, I'd just say skate park wise, like, I, you know, I wanna play a movie at the skate park one night. How could I use your screen? Like, is that? Something you thought about, like?
Yes, and I think, you know, the way we would probably start it, so right now when we do our park and plays, we started rotating them around parks and did four different events, plus the Fourth of July. To try to hit all the different areas. I think we would try to at least, you know, in the summer, start with something like that. And we could move it around and do, you know, three or four different movie nights across the summer. Uh, the idea is that it is part of the Parks and Recreation Department, even though we are and would be supporting other town events potentially. So figuring out how to. Rent it, um, you know, or if a family or or a community wanted to rent it, let's say. You know, like the Knowles wanted to put on their movie night, and they they contacted us. Something we'd have to think about in the future. And a way for us to recuperate cost on it, uh, but again, you know, that's not our ultimate goal. Our ultimate goal is to bring in community. So, yes, can I say yes, and I don't quite know yet, Robert, but. As a board, we would be more than. You know. You you all have the op- uh, opportunity to say, I think we should do movie nights for the community at so-and-so park, and we can talk about that moving forward, um. So it's not, it's not out of the realm of us to pick the the skate park or Centennial Park, let's just say. Um, one night and and to be able to. Um, promote that to the the skating community. But I think, you know, we we talked about how cool it would be to get a bunch of local food truck vendors to go over to Viewpoint Park. And grand scheme here, right? If we're unveiling our new multi-court over there, do a movie night at the same night. And just have vendors and stuff there. How how fun would that be? How packed could we get at Viewpoint Park, you know?
I think it'd be great. I mean, the car show, dude, I would love to have American graffiti playing up there, like, as that's going on, I mean, that'd be sweet, that'd be. Pretty, pretty fun. So. Yeah, yeah, I I I definitely like the idea. I think it's. Um, pretty good, you know, definitely helps entertain people for sure, and, you know, I, um. It's a good bonding thing, yeah. I would say, I like it. Sticker shock still, for sure. I mean, it's always amazing stuff, but.
Right, and I mean, we we started off at the, you know, if you look at the bottom, the the. Lesser sticker shock, or at the thirteen to fifteen range, and and we just kind of need to, we would need to dial it in with, you know. What the budget actually looks like and what would be appropriate.
Hmm, sure. Um, another thing about this too is like, these are full, complete packages, so. Literally short of a place to plug them in, there there would be nothing else that we would need to purchase to to basically do this. Um, so this comes with. E- every, every possible thing we'd need, the speakers, the projector, the cabling, the. You know, wiring, the software, the Blu-ray player, if we need one, all that fun stuff.
Man.
Yeah, very cool.
I absolutely love this idea, um. When my oldest was was a kid, we went to a lot of uh, movie nights in the park and um. Absolutely enjoyed ourselves, um. I think this is a great way to get people out, um, especially with younger kids, if if we start doing things. That are focused around family-oriented stuff. Um, I'm really excited about this. Um. I did have one question, though, in your second section there where it says. Some other ideas, uh, if we wanna push idea or push ideas or cut back. On two, it says nicer than option two. Is that the? Option two up top?
Um, yeah, that's a, that's a good question. Yes, it is um, nicer than than option two up top.
And then one last thing, um, from my part. I like the idea of being able to transmit to car stereos. Um, I just don't know that we have. A space for that. Um, we don't have large parking lots, we don't have. Unless we were to shut down the streets somewhere. And allow people to park in the streets, um. I think it's a great idea, and it kind of comes with one of those things as far as budget goes where. I would love to get the best package pro- possible. I mean, obviously. This is one of those things that I I see a potential use of this on many levels. Um, and you don't wanna like scrimping save when when you wanna get something better. And you don't wanna have to upgrade later. Um. But I really, really, really endorse this idea. I think this is something that would that would get people out and see parks and. And just get get families out of their houses.
Jordan or Teresa, Jesse?
I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
My only question would be, have we thought about other ways that we could spend this money, or are we dead set on just doing it this way, or doing a screen? Because I like the idea. I think it's a great idea, but just to give different options and see which one makes the best. Um, I think, I think it being, um. If it's gonna come out of the twenty twenty-three budget. Um, and we have the the money in a sp- the specific line for recreation programming that this would fall under, it it'd be hard for me to find something else that we could. You know, jump on right away that we would need programming-wise for recreation.
That makes sense.
Um, and that's really hon- honestly, that's really the the reason. Um, and that's really hon- honestly, that's really the, the reason that it's being presented right now and and why I would. You'd like to get your feedback because, you know, it. It became an option not very long ago as a way for the adaptive recreation and to sell it, we need to show, you know, how we can use it for the community and then. You know, with the community buy-in from what I got from Boonanza, it was like, well, we should see if it's a possibility. Um, and as, as the season moved on in that budget line that, that would support this kind of. We didn't have too much more to pull out of that. It really became, you know, something that could be actualized. Um. So, so answer it. I mean, I guess we could try to find some stuff. Um, but as far as impact on, you know, the entire community and and really for programming. Um, it, it might be hard at this point.
Um, I kinda, yeah, I, I totally get what, um, Jordan's saying and stuff, but I'm kind of in the point of. Um. Let's pull the trigger and go for it. I mean, I think we need stuff, you know, and if we got an opportunity to get some stuff and get some. Mojo going, I think it's cool. I think we could really build off of this and we'd have a whole year of. Doing, like, we could build a lot of things around this throughout the year. We could definitely. Um, use it to promote other stuff, you know, other things that we have going on at the park. I think we could use this as a huge advertisement to, uh. Um. Sh- show off the new crap at the skate park, you know, it's like, I mean, it's always, you know, I'll always go to that, that's where I hang out all the time. But yeah, you got. You know, baseball season's coming up now, we could, you know, throw, you know, a gate, you know, I mean, there's, the, the options are endless with this. I think we could really get people.
Right, and that's kinda. I, I agree with that. We were trying to think of ways to pair it and the baseball theme came up, you know? You know, opening night of softball, adult softball, you, you have so many families of kids that are already there. If we pop that up at, at WCP in the, the lower bowl area. And you got everybody in Buffalo Creek out there, like that would be a really special event that we never have seen in this town, you know?
Oh, yeah, it'd be huge. And then, you know, kids may actually wanna go watch their dad play softball, you know, it's be like, oh, yeah. Take me out there again, but with movie night, you got, you know, it's definitely the attention span of, you know, kids where. You know, they could run around underneath that thing or near that thing and be totally entertaining. I took a cruise and watched Back to the Future in the pool. That was like the best time of my life right there. So, I mean, you could, you know, have a good time with it, so.
Um, guys, is there enough money in the budget for, for next year and ongoing that we can, um, I don't know how this works, but I assume we have to purchase or rent. Uh, movies, um, do we have the money to do that? Do you have the money to do that?
Right, that, so that would come, um, we're, we're looking into those options, um. It seems to be a, a few hundred dollars from some people to, to rent a movie. So that's where we would go, like, if, if we do this for the community, is it just like a one dollar ticket, you know, just so we can recuperate some of that or is it all free? Um, that moving forward could also come out of the rec programming budget and then the good thing with that rec programming budget. Is that what we use, let's say in twenty twenty-four. If we wanna continue the program that we started in twenty twenty-four, we just add a line item into twenty twenty-five. Does that make sense? So let's just say we did movie nights and we found out how much budget it was. We pulled that from our rec programming in twenty twenty-four. We use five thousand dollars for movies. Let's just throw that number out there. Um, in twenty twenty-five, I would just turn around and say, instead of pulling that out again, I will make a new line item that'll. Present to the board and say, this is how much we need for movies to continue this program. Is that, does that make sense? It's.
Yeah.
Okay.
So like. Sorry, I, I was just gonna jump into other things we could do, you know, is like sell snacks at these things and, and, you know. Uh, all that kinda stuff. So there's ways to get costs back there, but I think another part of it too is, uh. It, obviously it would be kind of like a cost analysis for it, but rental or even how we could pair it with other. Like using it with Main Street if they wanted to do something. And I know, uh, a couple of meetings ago, trustee, Davey was talking about how. Um, somebody has like a auction license or something like that. I don't remember what, what it is, but something like that would be helpful. Or even if we did like, I don't know, bingo, um, there, I think there's other ways to, to do stuff with it. That doesn't necessarily also like require that cost outside of, of staff time. Um, so I like, we can, I, I'd like this option too, because there's so many things that we can do to just like keep. Keep growing like a giant bingo night or, you know, whatever the, the thing might be. And, um, Robert, to your point too. Um, one sets of these is meant to float in water if, you know, a, a pool need ever did arise, so.
Easy Eric, easy buddy. You start throwing those words around, man, it's, it's gonna be, uh, they're, they're, yeah, that would be. This town would erupt, dude.
Robert pushing the new, the new pool really hard now when he sees a screen floating around in it in his mind.
Oh, man, yeah, that's, that's wild.
Jesse or Aaron, do you guys have, um, any input?
I, this is Jesse. I love, love, love this idea. My kids would love it. Their friends would love it. We, it, it is a fantastic idea. So I am definitely on board. Great, great thinking. Um, th- this is Teresa and I'm totally on board too. I love, love this idea as well. I think this would be completely awesome for the community and as Laura, Laura Lynn said earlier, bringing a lot of different age groups and everybody together. I think it's great.
I think it's a great idea, um, the. The, the, I guess, I don't wanna be the only naysayer, but I, I just don't want this thing to shoot across the field and, um, you know. Hit somebody, kill somebody, you know, and so it's gonna have to be a responsibility. Do we have the? Um, staff that will be responsible, cause there'll probably be two people to set this up. Uh, and they said in the videos, they said forty-five minutes, little quicker taking it down. So two hour movie, four hours a night, eight hours for two staff members. Do we have that? And, um. Uh, is it gonna be responsible enough? Like, how much wind can this thing take? I mean, if I, a front blows through, are we shutting it down? Um, I think I was seeing like twenty-four miles an hour, but, um. If it, I, I mean, it's just gonna take a responsible party, but otherwise, I think it's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can, um. Oh, sorry, if you wanna talk, you're gonna talk about parking place?
Yeah, I was just gonna bring up like we, we, so we do have staff definitely qualified to monitor these things, um. Uh, you know, I, I, I would love to kinda take some time to like brag about our seasonal staff and our staff real quick for a moment. Uh, you know, we did have that, um, that crazy storm roll through for the Fourth of July this year, uh, that microburst. Um, and our, our staff was actually, um, of all the inflatables, our inflatables were the first ones down. Um, and also the only ones to not like float at all, I guess, in the air, if that's the like right way to determine that. Um, so our, our staff is like very responsive, um, they've all been trained super well, uh, and like. It's a, it's a point of pride, I think, for Billy and I both, um, just how awesome our seasonal staff are, but also our full-time staff at doing stuff like this. So I have absolutely, you know. Th- th- close to zero if any, um, like hesitations about our ability to handle something like that, so.
Perfect.
Okay, great. Well, I think I'm hearing that everybody is, uh, behind this. Do you need any other information, Billy?
No, um, I don't. I just need to relay this information back up to the top and see what we can do. I mean, there's a good chance it, it. Well, there's a chance it goes and a chance it doesn't this year, but, uh, with, with the, the opportunity, I wanted to try to. I guess, strike while the iron is hot, if we have the opportunity. So, um, thank you for the input. I will move forward with this and. Um, before I make any decisions, uh, or we do as a staff, I will reach out to you guys, even if it's before the next meeting. And just kinda let you all know where we're headed since it is such a, a large purchase and, um, I, I want you guys to be aware in case. You know, how our, our town can be sometimes when, when things are new and thrown out there without a ton of discussion. So I ju- I just want that to be apparent and I, I appreciate you guys, um, giving me your input and I'll see where it goes.
Alright, cool, man.
Okay, great. Um, bike racks, I'm excited about hear about this one.
Yeah, so these, these are the bike racks, um. As you, as you kinda cruise through, they're the bike fix stations, um. John, you had asked for, um, information. Do you wanna speak on to what? What you're thinking or what you needed for?
Um, so I was lucky enough to get reached out to, um, the Kuanis Club needed help, um, with their. Um, parade lights, uh, float, so I, I got lucky enough to get invited to pass out candy. Um, me and my kids walked through the parade, which I absolutely love doing. Um, but it also came with an invite to go to their meeting in January. Um, so a little, a little backstory, uh, I talked to, uh, Richard Bacon was the president, uh, prior. And so I went to one of their bike events, um, over by Ridley's. And, um, talked to him and a, a few groups that, um, it didn't really pan out, but. Um, he put the word in with the new president, Melanie Murphy. And, um, she invited me to this next meeting, um, to bring up about the bike stations, um, cause they wanna get involved. And so I'm gonna go and talk and I just wanted a little information going into that meeting. Um, about what we're, what we're trying to do and location, so I can present it to them properly. Um, so I, I probably will talk to you, Billy, at some point before then, um, about pricing. I didn't see that quite in the, uh, the packet there.
I, I can give it to you, yeah. Uh, I think if you look back at one of our other packets, I did actually present the, the pricing in one of those. If not, I'll just send you the email with the, uh. The invoice on it, John.
But I, I think they're ready to, to pull the trigger and, and help on this, um. I see that we've added the, um, Park Meadows location, cause we originally only had the one on the west side or the east side. Um, but I'm not sure what they're thinking as far as how much involvement, but the more information I can take to them. Um, I think I might be able to sell this well, um, and I'm pretty excited for the fact that, that these can go up. Um, the fact that we're putting one up already and then, you know, it shows that, that's our commitment. That we're trying and then hopefully getting them involved a little bit would be, um. Ideal, uh, cause in, in, at the end of the day, it's just, let's get projects done, you know, whoever we have to reach out to. I mean, even, even if they wanna brag about helping out, that, that's fine. I mean, they're a great, uh, portion of this community and they do a lot of stuff around here, so. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on board with me going and, um, reaching out to Kuanis. And, um, trying to get these done, um, cause it's been on our list. I mean, not, not too awful long, but. I think it's a really important part of our trails program, um, and maybe getting people out. So I, I'd like to, uh, get everybody's approval, I guess, to go to the Kuanis meeting and, and present this to them.
And as I made these maps, just so everybody knows, um, you know, like the, the Harvest Village Trail, that, that doesn't mean that we need four over there. Just that, that, those are probably higher use locations, um, that I was thinking as we talked about last time where we would potentially put them, so. You know, as you present this, John, to them, just say, we're not looking for every single one of these yellow Xs to be hit. Um, if there's multiple at a park, we just wanna make sure that each location that's accessible has something for people to be able to use.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, yeah, I, I went through that and that's what I, I figured the, uh, the pictures were is just. Where the locations make sense, I guess, um. And then, like I said, you know, if, if we can get, if we can get them involved at all. And I mean, even if it's just one, I mean, i- it's, it's something in our pocket, i- it's a checkmark. You know, it's, it's doing something, so. Um, I'm pretty excited. I, I, I'm, I'm really appreciative of them inviting me to their meeting. And, uh, and wanting to discuss this, so it's really, it's really good moving forward.
Yeah, nice work, John. That's pretty awesome. I didn't see you out there throwing candy though, so I gotta, might have to see some, we need some proof. It's not on film, but I don't know if we can believe you, but.
I was on the north side.
Alright, right on.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, um, you doing that, John. That's, that's a huge step and, um, any support you need from, from me. And I'm sure I can speak from every, anybody on the, on the board, just let us know, cause that would be big. Like you said, even one helps.
Yeah, definitely. You know, this is a. This is a pretty good idea, I mean, to get people out and, and riding, you know, and if. A kid doesn't have everything at home, you know, to tighten his, his wheel on or, or, you know, adjust the seat or whatever he needs to do, this is something that. Would be available and, and really important. I mean. I, I think in your packet, it showed even that you can list these online, um. Where, where your locations are at, so you know, you get the biking community, which is a huge community up here in Northern Colorado. There's a. A lot of bikers up here, so you know, people that even just ride down Highway One. You know, they might look up website and, and find that we have repair stations and now it just becomes a regular thing that they ride through our trails. And then that could lead to potential conversations later with the trustees about, we need to do this. Portion of our trail or we need to do this for our trail because there's so much more use now. And I, I think it's a good, good step moving forward.
Awesome. Thank you, John. Does anybody else have anything they wanna add to this? Okay. Uh, future calendar.
Were you able to bring that up, Eric? Yeah. So the one thing that I, uh, from last month's meeting that I added, um, I, I spoke with. Um. Kim Palmer. And she is with Republica- Republic Services Community Outreach and, um. It was actually trustee Daley that got, um. My skull and, um. Hillary Bartling over at Wellington Mi- Middle High School in communication with her. Because their Republic Services is looking to, um, promote the, themselves better within the community. And helping do lasting projects or, um, impactful things in, in hopes that they're. I, I, I won't, I won't speak for her, but in my opinion, that their reputation will grow and be more of a positive influence on the community. Rather than just the impact that they make by driving on our roads, um, and, and, you know, picking up the trash and everything and, and, um. You know, we do, we do use their services for the town, um. So we sat down and talked and, and she was, um, extremely engaging and she just wants to find out more about what this group does, so. Um, I figured I would put a potential meeting out there for her to come talk about things, especially if on the tenth. We're talking more about the projects that we are gonna try to do this year. Um, I didn't go too far in depth with her, but you know, I, I mentioned a couple of things and something like the community. Um, the, the WCP Memorial, Veterans Memorial is something like. Large and long lasting that, that they would potentially wanna, um, learn more about to see if they could get involved, so. Um, I just put that one on if everybody thinks that's okay for her to come and, and speak with us.
Great. Um. Yeah, that's super exciting. That's, that's great.
Uh, I still need to see if Bob or Cody are available, um. On the tenth to speak about trails, but I know we wanna get that movement early in the year, so. Maybe I can, maybe I can talk to Cody to see if he can come.
Okay.
Um. Anything else anybody wants to see? I can, you know, with the typical stuff, like we'll do a WCP update. And maybe you have more information either on the first or the second meeting of the year. I'll fill that in with kind of the, the regular agenda stuff, um. But if there's anything specific, as always, um, everybody has access to this in that link. It's editable. If you don't wanna edit yourself, please just email me what you're thinking and I will add it. And as we move forward, we can always discuss what's good to talk about now, what we can push off down the road.
Do there any developers that, um, that are wanting to, to come talk about anything?
Um, probably not quite yet, um, there has been talk about. The, the new development, I don't know, did, did anybody watch the Board of Trustees meeting from last?
No, but I got several phone calls about, about it, um, about people talking about the park and the amenities that the park was gonna have. And so, um, that's what leads me to ask if the developers, um, are ready to come have a discussion.
Yeah, they're, they're not at that phase right now. Um, one thing they did discuss last. Yeah, they're, they're not at that phase right now. Um, one thing they did discuss last night was a potential to purchase the land north of the Harvest Village Park that goes from Jefferson um, by the railroad tracks. And uh, in between the railroad tracks and we're right across from um, the steel company. Just to the south, all that open land that goes south that um, works into the parks that we already have. Um, in uh, how should I say this? Um, basically the developer would purchase that land. And it would reduce some of the land that they would have in their development for parks, but their, their park would still be a 20 acre park. And then we would get the 12 acres north of Harvest Village Park in that area.
And that would be a town, they would, that would be a town park or a um, HOA?
Town, that would be town property, basically. Um, that, the 12 acres in, in the park that's going in um, the 20 acre park that, that is part of the development agreement for the amount of space that they need to provide for recreation. Um, that would most certainly be, you know, I think it's what is WCP like 13, 15 acres, something like that of usable space? Some of that's the I think it's like 17 acres, but some of that's the dirt bike track and then that drainage area um, right there on Washington. So it'd be a big
I think Cody said 11 usable acres last night.
Uh, and that might be usable. I think the park itself is like 16 or 17 acres in our, in our, in our area, in the towns area. So, so this, this park would be um, 20 acres and when they're, wh- when we know what's going to happen with the land, whether we get a 32 acre park or a 12 acre addition purchase and then the 20 acre, then we'll, we'll bring them in when they're ready to start putting amenities, but because that will be the town.
Okay.
Sounds like a beautiful place for a new skate park, just.
Well, Robert, I mean, honestly, you're, you're kind of swinging in the right direction there.
Right on.
Tough.
Uh, I'm serious. It's, it's definitely a thought.
Oh.
So, I love you, man.
Professionally.
Okay, does anybody else have any um, items to talk about for the uh, the future calendar? Okay, we can move on to talking about announcements and what do we, what do we got going on? I'm, I'm super curious specifically to hear about signage.
There's a sign up. Has everybody seen our new park sign?
I've not, no.
It's r- right outside the library park. Um, it's the first sign that they finally put in after two years of this project moving. Um, yeah, it's right, it's right on um, what street is this? Out in front of the library, why can't I think of it?
Isn't it Wilson?
Yeah.
Yes, of course it's Wilson, because the Wilson shed's here. It's right on, it's right on Wilson and um, right, right where fourth basically dead ends into Wilson. Um, so check it out, the rest of them, you know, like I said, most of the pads have been poured. Um, the sign company's getting out when the weather is good, so hopefully it'll be WCP next. And then moving forward, but there, there's one sign out and multiples may just waiting to get in, so.
I'm going right after this meeting to go check it out.
It's, it's really nice. Um,
Very cool, very cool.
So, uh, I encourage everybody to look at it and hopefully within the next few months, they will all be in, that is a finger cross, but you know how the timeframe has been for this whole project. Um, but we're nearing the point where we can actually maybe wipe our hands of it.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, Jesse and Aaron with uh, I'm sure you've gathered, we have been working on this project a long time. Um, it's been a lot of back and forth and so to have signage at each of the parks um, saying specifically what the park name is, um, is, is a pretty um, fun achievement.
I actually ended up coming to the Leaper Center because I knew nobody would be here. I had to drop my son off at basketball practice. If you want, walk out there and live stream the, the sign. It might just take me a minute.
Do it.
Very cool.
Do it, do it.
I don't know if the, the wifi in here is bad enough. I don't know if it's going to take my computer and have to switch over to my phone real quick. If you want, I could.
Yes, I'm already in my jams. Yeah, do it.
Here, after, actually after the meeting, what I'll do is I'll, um, I'll take a couple of pictures of it and I'll send it to that text group. Does that sound good?
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, yeah, that's, that's big. Uh, you want me to continue? I mean, a lot of the updates, kind of we, we talked about, a lot of the, the work that we've been doing is finishing up our budget. We're going into um, our annual review, so that's taking up a bunch of the time. But um, you know, like on the general, the general park side. Um, nothing crazy. I think since the last time, we didn't really do too much more with trees. I've got a couple more earmarks that need to come down. That'll be coming down across town as, as we go through the winter. Um, you know, we'll, we'll be getting that new position. We uh, I'll let, well, I guess I can talk to you on the recreation side. Um, we've, we've did uh, eight in-person interviews for a new assistant recreation coordinator. And after that, we brought our three best candidates back out for one-on-one with just our team out to um, coffee, just to chat with them and talk about their vision and answer any questions they had for us. And we made a decision, so um, we put out the offer and we um, Emma Adams accepted that. And we'll be starting the first week into the new year, so that's pretty exciting. So we'll be onboarding a new um, full-time staff just at the, the turn of the year. Um, you know, all that. But that kind of stuff has definitely been taking up a lot of the time. Um, I'm trying to think of any other updates besides all the fun stuff that came with, with the budget being passed. Um, not, not too much more unless anybody has anything specific they want to ask.
Um, I just want to ask if we were able to make any headway. Um, we've talked about doing a map that we can, you know, pass out, give out, um, just so everybody understands all the cool parks that we do have in the recreation. Um, how's that going?
Right, well, that's a, that's a good point. Um, one thing I think we, we should consider and I would, we need to talk about um, as we move forward with that is just if we're continually getting these parks. Um, you know, in the next year, there's going to potentially be another open space that we can convert to a park if that land is granted. And then the year after that, when the large park is done, do we want to do something that is actually a hand map? Or do we want to try to do something digital that can be adjusted and adapted on the fly? Rather than redoing the same thing over every year when we add amenities?
Yeah, I, I, to me, digital's fine, just as long as it's on the website. We can say, hey, go here, take a look, print it out. You know, maybe for different occasions, we can um, hand them out, you know, print some off, um, but for money saving, sure.
Okay, so I would say.
That's cool. It'd be something nice to be able to offer the chamber when they do their magazine or uh, something to slide into. I think you guys did talk about doing a mail-out recreational catalog or something, so it'd be, I think it's good to have, you know, and then printing it would be a secondary thing if there was a place to put it without, you know, I don't know if we need exactly to have printout pamphlets, you know, sitting out everywhere, but digital for sure.
Um, so, so as far as content goes, the, the recreation um, calendar is more at the forefront because it needs to be out by springtime or really as soon as possible. So that's kind of where our, uh, the backend work has gone to focus on. Um, Eric, if you want to speak a little bit more to that?
Yeah, so that's definitely in prog- um, that's definitely in progress. So our um, our communications and marketing intern is uh, a little busy this week um, with finals, so um, haven't been, been touching base with him too much, but um, we are planning on bringing him in next week, right before the uh, like big break and then um, bringing him in after the holidays um, to help kind of like finalize some of that stuff. And so really hoping to get like that part specifically ironed out. He's been composing all of that, um, and really kind of like working forward on uh, dates and everything um, to, to get those lined up. We, we got him all of our activity dates and registration dates and all that kind of stuff. And so you know, he's been, he's been working on that kind of thing. Along with, you know, the other stuff of like a big, a big package to present basically. And so um, working on that, but really looking forward to getting him in the next, you know, few weeks or so to um, finalize and iron that out and hopefully get that out, because right now we've, you know, we've already got registration closed for the youth sport all the way through February. Um, so the next one will be March, so yeah, really hoping to get that, like Billy said, out. Um, probably right at the turn of the new year would be the goal, so.
Okay, great, cool. What else?
Uh, another thing we're working on is in recreation is really pushing that adaptive programming. Uh, we've been working with, as I mentioned last time, a couple of local partners, but we're bringing in um, the library and our goal is to put in our first ever adaptive recreation opportunity night as a potential dance slash craft for um, for that community to be able to come in and do like a winter formal and create some stuff for Valentine's Day that they can give to their, either their family or care providers um, and provide them opportunities for sensory um, and tactile um, functioning and um, fun. So we actually have a meeting, hopefully, hopefully tomorrow, if we can put it together to, to really dial in some of the specifics to that. So we've been really excited and working on multiple fronts to get that going as quick as possible, because that's a, a big haul and undertaking to start that program and, and run it correctly. Um, so that's um, something I'm pretty proud of our, our team for, for getting going really just in a couple of months. Um, yeah, other than that, any other updates you can think of, Eric?
Um, no, youth sports are doing well, adult sports are doing well, um, Merceden really great numbers for where we want to be at for, uh, we saw really great numbers for basketball, really great numbers for adult volleyball. Um, and those continued into youth volleyball and a second season of adult volleyball, so just kind of riding that wave right now, which is cool.
Oh, sorry, one, one last thing for parks. We are trying to purchase um, with capital money from this year for uh, irrigation upgrades, some smart controllers went through the process of going through like three different um, iterations of what different smart controllers are, what their options are. Um, and we found one, it's called Smart Rain, that's going to work well for what we have amenity wise in our town, so I'm going to try to move forward with, with installing that, which will greatly improve our uh, water distribution, calculating exactly how much we have, because we don't know anywhere in our system, how much water we're actually putting out, which is um, it pains me to say that that's never been uh, addressed fully. Um, so starting that process is going to be a huge, not just undertaking, but an amazing change for how we actually run our operations on an irrigation day-to-day basis. And um, this company guarantees that with the, with I could get into it forever, but basically with what they save based on ET evapotransformation, that you get your money back for the controller and the, the cloud-based system uh, every year in water savings.
And then Billy, did you, uh, do they know much about the splash pad stuff?
Um, yeah, we're still, we're still ongoing with that splash pad safety upgrade and we'll be purchasing the necessary retrofitting for our splash pad that'll take it from all chemical, liquid chemical feed to a puck-based feed and CO2 feed, so it'll eliminate over 200 gallon or over 100 gallons worth of liquid chemical we have on site and completely eliminate um, a huge amount of safety for the public and for um, our staff while also making it um, more sustainable in the long run, because that will go to a new cloud-based program there. So any issues that happen in real time, we'll know about them, rather than having to wait for it to, to fail or shut down or continuing spilling chemicals where we don't know about it. Um, so that project was billed at a hundred and twenty-five thousand and with the upgrades that we're doing, we're probably going to come in at about I want to say under, but I, I, I'm saying conservatively 50,000, so off the top, we're saving at least about $75,000 on that project. And overall, making it safer than what the original plan was.
Wow, that's pretty exciting. That's great.
Yeah, that was, that's a hu- huge win for the team, the town. I mean, it, it encompasses pretty much top to bottom. Uh, a better plan of what the original plan was trying to accomplish, so. Um, so we, again, that's another one where we can feel pretty proud as a team to be able to relook at things and that took, that took everybody. Um, I will say like, uh, you know, we had Public Works and they're looking at it. They're the experts on water, water quality, um, chemicals, all that stuff and with where the project was headed, um, a couple of the engineers said we're looking to potentially have to ask closer to 250 to get the building and the containment all built. And I just said, no, we are not spending $250,000. So we came up with a, a better solution after research and talking and um, previous experience that, that I have and certain people have, so um, we're, we're able to, to come way under budget on something um, that's going to be better.
Nice work, Billy.
Thank you. And team?
Yeah.
And team, yes.
I'll pat everybody around the town on the back for that one.
But I did most of the work, I did. I'm just kidding. You did.
Um, yeah, so, so, so good things always happening. Um, yeah, the more I think there's always more things, but those, those are some large things that are, that are going on.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any other announcements or questions or anything else?
I got one thing real quick. Um, I um, like Laurel Lynn, we've been on the board for a little while and we had some um, kind of slower years. But I really want to tip my cap to uh, Billy and Eric and the staff they have. Um, it really seems like exciting times right now. Um, it seems like we're, we're making progress where before we were just kind of just passing ideas around and nothing was happening. This is really, really going to be an exciting year and, and I got to give a lot of credit to, to Billy, Eric a- and the staff um, for putting in the extra work and then, I mean, the board in itself, just volunteering your time. Um, it's, it's crucial to get these things going and to show that there's people that have support for these ideas and these projects a- and um, I'm just really excited to see where things are going and um, just real happy with, with how things are at the moment. And so like I said, um, I want to thank everybody here at the moment a- and everybody who, who helps out with these projects. Um, I think we're going to have a great year. I'm looking forward to it. Let's knock some things off the list.
Yep, absolutely agree with John. Thank you.
Boom, man. Yeah, very cool, very cool. Yeah, I would say to the, to the new uh, board members, yeah, if we, if uh, we can make Laurel Lynn smile, then we're on a good track, because that's always my I'll say it every time, look across state Laurel Lynn smiling, we're doing all right, so it's pretty good.
Thank you. I'm, yeah, I'm super excited. This is all really good information. Uh, we are making good progress. Happy to see a full board. Think we're, we're going to gain some momentum, so this is great.
Absolutely.
Um, yeah, if we don't have anything else, anybody else?
This is Jesse. Just want to say I'm excited to be here and impressed with all of you and how much you are accomplishing. So, thanks for all you do. The community appreciates it.
Um, yeah, I, I guess I got one small update. We did a um, damn, when was it? Um, the food, the uh, the food truck people with Main Street came by and asked us to do an event with them. So we hung out there, um, just, you know, just another small little. So we hung out there, um, just, you know, just another small little group gathering of the skate park kids and stuff like that. We handed out more helmets and get more people involved and stuff like that. So, um, just, just an update that, you know, we're still doing. Our thing over at the park and we're getting more, you know, now we're, now we're with Main Street, working that, you know, working with those guys doing stuff. So, um, you know, I think everybody's really excited, you know, overall town-wise to keep collaborating and keep bringing stuff together. Um, you know, from different groups throughout the town. So it's pretty fun. It's good to, it's good times.
Yeah, that was the Make Go Food Truck Rally, I think, right, Robert?
Yeah, yeah, I think we call it Skater Dine. Yeah, I, I, my summer was so, it's still going pretty wild. So I can't really remember what date that was, but it was somewhere a month or two ago. But yeah, um, yeah, it was cool. It was a great time.
Oh, cool.
Awesome. Very nice. Okay. Well, if nobody else has anything, I think we're ready to adjourn. And, um, I think, you know, over the next month, um, please add to the future calendar. Let's, let's email more. Um, all communication is good. If you have questions, send it out. Um, I think we can get some of this stuff out of the way. Um, before we have a meeting. We just can't vote on things outside of a meeting. We can't make decisions outside of the meeting, but definitely, um, brainstorming or asking questions. Is always welcome and we'll plan to see everybody, um, at 6:30, uh, at the meeting in January.
Thanks, everybody. Happy holidays.
All right. Merry Christmas, everyone. Thanks, everyone.
Can I make an emotion to adjourn? Is that how we, we do that, right?
I'm raising my hand.
Hi.
We don't have to motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned 7:35.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Bye-bye.
I want to see that picture, Billy.
I'll send it.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.